I'm John Christensen, President of the Eastern Panhandle Central Labor Council. And we're really happy to be here this morning and talk a little bit about Workers Memorial Day. Workers Memorial Day, April 28th. The theme this year is Organize Safe Jobs Now. Decades of struggle by working people in unions have improved working conditions and made jobs safer, but it has not been enough. This year, we come together to strengthen workers' rights and protections to ensure everyone can come home safely at the end of the work shift and without chronic illnesses from toxic exposures at work. Mourn for the dead, fight for the living, and I ask for a moment of silence for the 15 West Virginia workers who died in 2021. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Del, how are you doing, sir?
Good morning. It's great to see everyone here this morning. I'm here for a multitude of reasons. The first reason is that each one of you sitting back there are friends of mine, and it's always good to see friends. So I appreciate everything that you guys do for our county and appreciate all your hard work. I know that sometimes being a county commissioner is a very daunting task, and some people don't always realize that. So I'm here to spread the good news. My good news is a little different than what the pastor had to say. Mine is good news about infrastructure. So I want to give you guys a brief overview about some infrastructure policies that are coming down from the state level and how I think that Berkeley County can work to try to utilize some of this. So back during the session, we passed a bill, House Bill 4566. And that 4566 was basically, I'm going to read it to you, and it's the Water Department Authority shall establish the enhancement of a grant subaccount in the Economic Enhancement Grant Fund to be expanded as grants to governmental agencies or nonprofits to cover all or portions costs of projects, of infrastructure projects. And then it goes on to tell which code it's under. So I'm here today to tell you guys, in our last special session, we were able to do a special appropriation of $250 million into what we call the IJDC. The IJDC is the Infrastructure and Jobs Development Council, which is usually just called the Infrastructure Council. So that council typically will receive about $50 million a year in funds from the state to use as a closing fund. So that's basically used as a closing fund. So whenever counties or municipalities have projects, they can draw down federal grants, they can draw down state grants, EDA money, they bring all the money in from all the different organizations. The Infrastructure Council is where everyone can meet at one time, so you're not trying to track down all these different authorities that you have to meet with, which would be the Water Development Authority, the DEP, the PSC, the West Virginia Economic Development, and also the Bureau of Public Health. So this is all combined, and it's kind of a closing house for that. And then they will also try to find those last dollars in to try to make these projects work. So now we have grown from $50 million to $300 million. We've super funded that. So there's a lot of money available for these projects. That's the good news. There are seven different criteria that's going to be offered to make these, this money's available from the IJDC. And I'm going to read those seven criteria. But I will tell you that the first and most important one that's going to make this money from the IJDC is local municipalities and local counties having skin in the game. So basically figuring out how much money that the counties want to use of your ARPA funds. And you are allowed to use your ARPA funds towards these projects. So I'm going to read those seven criteria. The first criteria is to cover the cost of the bid overruns for projects and infrastructure projects approved by the Western Infrastructure and Job Development Council. We know a lot of projects have already been started. We have a lot of overruns because we know the price of materials and the price of labor has skyrocketed. So these are the projects that are in process and working now. Second is to cover all or portions of costs for extending or expanding water, storm water or wastewater services to enhance economic development and/or tourism when recommended by the Secretary of Commerce, the Secretary of Economic Development, and/or the Secretary of Treasurer. Now, we all know that we have a good relationship with the Secretary of Commerce, who is Secretary Gaunch. We have a great relationship with the Secretary of Economic Development, which is Mitch Carmichael. And we have a great relationship with the Secretary of Tourism, which is Chelsea Ruby. So that right there is one of the great criteria that's in here. Number three, to cover the cost of facilitating the merger and/or consolidation of wastewater providers where all parties are proposed merged, making joint applications to the Western Infrastructure. That there is kind of, we've already done a good job on that. That's kind of the forced pulling or the forced merging of these small little water and sewer developments that are everywhere. Berkeley County has already done a really good job of that. We've forced and we've pulled all of our stuff together, so that really doesn't affect us. That's really something that the PSC is going to be working on. They want to really try to consolidate these small water and sewer authorities. The fourth one is to cover the cost of water, storm water, and/or wastewater projects for governmental agencies where the combined rate for water, storm water, wastewater exceeds 1.5% of the governmental agency's median household income. Now, I don't think that that's probably going to, criteria that's going to affect us too much because our median income, this is going to be probably more for the southern counties and the counties that are really struggling economically. Five is to cover up startup costs for government utilities that are provided to extend service to unserved or underserved areas of the state. Once again, I think that this is probably going to be a criteria that's going to affect the southern part of West Virginia and other underserved areas of the state, probably not a criteria that we're going to fall under. To provide a commitment to cover the differences between the cost of funding projects and updated cost estimate when the project is bid, to provide a grant for the dollar differences between committed funding and the bid results. So that's where the counties and municipalities will come in and have their own closing fund. So basically, if there's a little bit of open area in the bids and there's maybe a few hundred thousand dollars or a million dollars short, where the counties are willing to put that skin in the game. So anything that the counties or municipalities are willing to do to put skin in the game makes this more, makes this a better project for the Infrastructure Council to look at. Number seven is to cover all the portions of the infrastructure projects to enhance, let me start that over, to cover all or a portion of the infrastructure projects to enhance economic development and/or tourism when recommended by the Secretary of Commerce, the Secretary of Economic Development, and/or the Secretary of Treasurer. Now, we all know that we have a good relationship with the Secretary of Commerce, who is Secretary Gaunch. We have a great relationship with the Secretary of Economic Development, which is Mitch Carmichael. And we have a great relationship with the Secretary of Tourism, which is Chelsea Ruby. So that right there is one of the great criteria that's in here. Number three, to cover the cost of facilitating the merger and/or consolidation of wastewater providers where all parties are proposed merged, making joint applications to the Western Infrastructure. That there is kind of, we've already done a good job on that. That's kind of the forced pulling or the forced merging of these small little water and sewer developments that are everywhere. Berkeley County has already done a really good job of that. We've forced and we've pulled all of our stuff together, so that really doesn't affect us. That's really something that the PSC is going to be working on. They want to really try to consolidate these small water and sewer authorities. The fourth one is to cover the cost of water, storm water, and/or wastewater projects for governmental agencies where the combined rate for water, storm water, wastewater exceeds 1.5% of the governmental agency's median household income. Now, I don't think that that's probably going to, criteria that's going to affect us too much because our median income, this is going to be probably more for the southern counties and the counties that are really struggling economically. Five is to cover up startup costs for government utilities that are provided to extend service to unserved or underserved areas of the state. Once again, I think that this is probably going to be a criteria that's going to affect the southern part of West Virginia and other underserved areas of the state, probably not a criteria that we're going to fall under. To provide a commitment to cover the differences between the cost of funding projects and updated cost estimate when the project is bid, to provide a grant for the dollar differences between committed funding and the bid results. So that's where the counties and municipalities will come in and have their own closing fund. So basically, if there's a little bit of open area in the bids and there's maybe a few hundred thousand dollars or a million dollars short, where the counties are willing to put that skin in the game. So anything that the counties or municipalities are willing to do to put skin in the game makes this more, makes this a better project for the Infrastructure Council to look at. Number seven is to cover all the portions of the infrastructure projects to enhance, let me start that over, to cover all or a portion of the infrastructure projects to enhance economic development and/or tourism when recommended by the Secretary of Commerce, Economic Development, and/or Tourism. So those are the seven different ways that this money is going to be available. So what I've come here this morning for is to recommend to the county that the projects that are going to get these fundings are the projects that are the closest to being ready. So I don't know if we have projects that are in the design phase, that are in the bid phase. I don't know what projects we have, and that's not what I'm here to do today. I'm here to try to help you guys figure out how we can earn these dollars. So I have a brief little overview. It would have, the best way to work this is, is would have the county commission set their priorities and projects, would recommend that an idea of how much ARPA funds they receive and how much they are willing to commit to maybe one or two projects. It will be a judgment call. And I ask for a moment of silence for the 15 West Virginia workers who died in 2021. Thank you very much.
Doug Hardy, how are you doing, sir?
Good morning. It's great to see everyone here this morning. I'm here for a multitude of reasons. The first reason is that each one of you sitting back there are friends of mine, and it's always good to see friends. So I appreciate everything that you guys do for our county and appreciate all your hard work. I know that sometimes being a county commissioner is a very daunting task, and some people don't always realize that. So I'm here to spread the good news. My good news is a little different than what the pastor had to say. Mine is good news about infrastructure. So I want to give you guys a brief overview about some infrastructure policies that are coming down from the state level and how I think that Berkeley County can work to try to utilize some of this. So back during the session, we passed a bill, House Bill 4566. And that 4566 was basically, I'm going to read it to you, and it's the Water Department Authority shall establish the enhancement of a grant subaccount in the Economic Enhancement Grant Fund to be expanded as grants to governmental agencies or nonprofits to cover all or portions costs of projects, of infrastructure projects. And then it goes on to tell which code it's under. So I'm here today to tell you guys, in our last special session, we were able to do a special appropriation of $250 million into what we call the IJDC. The IJDC is the Infrastructure and Jobs Development Council, which is usually just called the Infrastructure Council. So that council typically will receive about $50 million a year in funds from the state to use as a closing fund. So that's basically used as a closing fund. So whenever counties or municipalities have projects, they can draw down federal grants, they can draw down state grants, EDA money. They bring all the money in from all the different organizations. The Infrastructure Council is where everyone can meet at one time, so you're not trying to track down all these different authorities that you have to meet with, which would be the Water Development Authority, the DEP, the PSC, the West Virginia Economic Development, and also the Bureau of Public Health. So this is all combined, and it's kind of a closing house for that. And then they will also try to find those last dollars in to try to make these projects work. So now we have grown from $50 million to $300 million. We've super funded that. So there's a lot of money available for these projects. That's the good news. There are seven different criteria that's going to be offered to make these, this money's available from the IJDC. And I'm going to read those seven criteria. But I will tell you that the first and most important one that's going to make this money from the IJDC is local municipalities and local counties having skin in the game. So basically figuring out how much money that the counties want to use of your ARPA funds. And you are allowed to use your ARPA funds towards these projects. So I'm going to read those seven criteria. The first criteria is to cover the cost of the bid overruns for projects and infrastructure projects approved by the Western Infrastructure and Job Development Council. We know a lot of projects have already been started. We have a lot of overruns because we know the price of materials and the price of labor has skyrocketed. So they are also, these are the projects that are in process and working now. Second is to cover all or portions of costs for extending or expanding water, storm water or wastewater services to enhance economic development and/or tourism when recommended by the Secretary of Commerce, the Secretary of Economic Development, and/or the Secretary of Treasurer. Now, we all know that we have a good relationship with the Secretary of Commerce, who is Secretary Gaunch. We have a great relationship with the Secretary of Economic Development, which is Mitch Carmichael. And we have a great relationship with the Secretary of Tourism, which is Chelsea Ruby. So that right there is one of the great criteria that's in here. Number three, to cover the cost of facilitating the merger and/or consolidation of wastewater providers where all parties are proposed merged, making joint applications to the Western Infrastructure. That there is kind of, we've already done a good job on that. That's kind of the forced pulling or the forced merging of these small little water and sewer developments that are everywhere. Berkeley County has already done a really good job of that. We've forced and we've pulled all of our stuff together, so that really doesn't affect us. That's really something that the PSC is going to be working on. They want to really try to consolidate these small water and sewer authorities. The fourth one is to cover the cost of water, storm water, and/or wastewater projects for governmental agencies where the combined rate for water, storm water, wastewater exceeds 1.5% of the governmental agency's median household income. Now, I don't think that that's probably going to, criteria that's going to affect us too much because our median income, this is going to be probably more for the southern counties and the counties that are really struggling economically. Five is to cover up startup costs for government utilities that are provided to extend service to unserved or underserved areas of the state. Once again, I think that this is probably going to be a criteria that's going to affect the southern part of West Virginia and other underserved areas of the state, probably not a criteria that we're going to fall under. To provide a commitment to cover the differences between the cost of funding projects and updated cost estimate when the project is bid, to provide a grant for the dollar differences between committed funding and the bid results. So that's where the counties and municipalities will come in and have their own closing fund. So basically, if there's a little bit of open area in the bids and there's maybe a few hundred thousand dollars or a million dollars short, where the counties are willing to put that skin in the game. So anything that the counties or municipalities are willing to do to put skin in the game makes this more, makes this a better project for the Infrastructure Council to look at. Number seven is to cover all the portions of the infrastructure projects to enhance, let me start that over, to cover all or a portion of the infrastructure projects to enhance economic development and/or tourism when recommended by the Secretary of Commerce, Economic Development, and/or Tourism. So those are the seven different ways that this money is going to be available. So what I've come here this morning for is to recommend to the county that the projects that are going to get these fundings are the projects that are the closest to being ready. So I don't know if we have projects that are in the design phase, that are in the bid phase. I don't know what projects we have, and that's not what I'm here to do today. I'm here to try to help you guys figure out how we can earn these dollars. So I have a brief little overview. It would have, the best way to work this is, it would have the county commission set their priorities and projects, would recommend that an idea of how much ARPA funds they receive and how much they are willing to commit to maybe one or two projects. It will be a judgment call which ones they want to push, matching other federal allocated funds. So that's drawing down federal money, state money, development authority money, EDA money, any places that we can draw money down from for these projects. They will also need to know the schedule of the projects and when they will bid, and when they will bid. So the further along the projects are, the better chance we have at receiving this money. So what I would recommend to the council today is, is that we prioritize which projects we want to try to get funding through. We put together a small group, we take down our package. The most important that we want to talk to is Marie Preziosi, who is the President of the Water Development Authority. She is really kind of the, heads all this up. And then also Ian Erling, who works in the Governor's Office. And we want to make sure that we meet with Secretary Carmichael, Secretary Ruby, and also with Secretary Ed Gaunch. So that's really all I have to say to you guys this morning about this, but I'm hoping that we can work together to try to figure out a way to try to utilize as much of this money from the Water Development Authority and the Infrastructure Committee to help our water needs. We know that we have some water needs and some sewer needs in our county because we're a quickly growing county. I also don't need to tell you guys this, that we are on an island up here. We know that we're kind of in a fight by ourselves. So we, we're on an island. We need to be organized. We need to have a concerted front, that making sure that all of our legislators, all of our county commissioners, all of our city officials, that we are all working in a united front to try to gather as much funds as we can for the Eastern Panhandle. You guys see us get kicked in the teeth every once in a while on the House floor and also in the Senate when we're trying to do things for the Eastern Panhandle. It's my goal, if I am blessed enough, to win my, this election that I'm in, to do a better job of getting the Eastern Panhandle delegates, senators, and everyone better organized, and try to put together a coalition that, so when we go to Charleston, that we can have a united front. So thank you guys very much for your time, and I appreciate everything that you do. If you have any questions, I'm willing to take any questions, or if you guys want to contact me after the council meeting, I'm always available.
We'll catch up to you, Doug Hardy. Thank you for the job you do. You do an excellent job for us.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Thanks. I'm going to pass over to the Vice President. We'll tell him that.
All righty. Thank you, Doug. Any more items from the public?
Yes, sir.
State your name for the record, please.
My name is Terry Meisinger. I'm coming to you as one of the people. On September 13th, 2021, I sent, mailed a legal notice to Commissioner Copenhever for the entire county commission. It was received, like I said, received on September 13th, 2021. It referenced citations in the Constitution of West Virginia. What I asked was, where did we, the people, give the county commission, for the county Board of Health, the power, the responsibility, and the authority to mandate, require masks in K through 12 schools? It's not in the Constitution. That is unconstitutional. According to my legal notice, I give Commissioner Copenhever five days to provide me an answer. I have yet to receive an answer from you, the county commission. According to my legal notice, a lack of response was to be taken as asset acquiescence and considered as the use of powers outside the Constitution. Article 3, Section 16 of the Constitution states that I have a constitutional right to instruct my representatives, that would be you, and to apply for redress of grievances. I have sent numerous emails, one for all of you. I've met with one of you and have yet to have my grievance addressed. This right is not to be infringed. That's why I'm here. One of the commissioners did with me to address my grievance, but nothing ever came from the meeting that I'm aware of. My grievance still has not been addressed. Let me give you all a little history. What is the purpose of government? I'll ask a rhetorical question. What's the purpose of government? In the Declaration of Independence, our forefathers wrote, "We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness." That to secure these rights, let me read that again, that to secure these rights, governments are instituted among men. It is your job to protect our rights, right from the Declaration of Independence, deriving their just powers from the consent of the government. That is the people. I am one of the people. In keeping with the philosophy of the writers of the Declaration of Independence, that governments were created to protect the people's rights, our West Virginia forefathers wrote the last sentence of Article 1, Section 2 of the Constitution of West Virginia. It is the high and solemn duty of the several departments of government created by this Constitution. County commissions were created by this Constitution to guard and protect the people of this state, Berkeley County, from all encroachments upon the rights so reserved. In other words, the county commission's main priority is to protect all the people's rights from being encroached upon from any source. That means a governor's executive order, if it encloses on our rights, you have, we have given you the power, the responsibility, the authority to say, we're not doing it here in Berkeley County because it encloses on the people's rights. If it's a federal government agency, your responsibility to protect our rights. If it's a West Virginia code, that the legislature went too far, then encosed on our rights, like the quarantine code, you have a responsibility to say, we're not, we're not, we're not, we're not going to enforce that code here in Berkeley County. Or the county health board, the mask mandate. I'm now going to quote a maxim of law. Maxims of law are found in Old English common law, in the ancient Roman law, and in the Bible. Maxims of law are universally accepted as being true rules and principles of law. The main object of government is the protection and preservation of personal rights, property, public liberties, and upholding the law of God. That's 51P. In your meeting October 26th, 2021, at about the one hour, six minute mark of the video, it was adjourned to discuss COVID. I personally want to applaud especially Commissioner Copenhever, but the rest of you, I think we're all on the same page, okay? I'm not here to be confront, I have to tell you, we have given you the power to protect us, the people. What Commissioner Copenhever basically said at the very beginning was that the county commission's duty was to do the commission's job, that he was not 100% sure to what level. He also stated that he was seeking legal advice. I'm giving you constitutional advice. You have the authority to not, you have the authority to protect our, the people's rights from being encroached upon. I said encroach. The Constitution says encroach, not infringe. Encroach. Don't even get close. All of you took an oath or affirmation of office, correct? The health officer took an affirmation or oath of office? The Board of Health, the board, should have taken a oath of office? So you, all of you have a responsibility. If you don't honor your responsibility, it's called maladministration. Technically, from the people, maybe for legal, it could be perjury because all of you took an oath to support the Constitution. To emphasize my point, I'm going to say, Commissioner Copenhever, it is your high and solemn duty to guard and protect the people of Berkeley County from all encroachments upon the rights so reserved. Commissioner Whitaker, it is your high and solemn duty to guard and protect the people of Berkeley County from all encroachments upon the rights so reserved. Commissioner Barnhart, it is your high and solemn duty to guard and protect the people of Berkeley County from all encroachments upon the rights so reserved. Commissioner Doye, it is your high and solemn duty to guard and protect the people of Berkeley County from all encroachments upon the rights so reserved. Mr. Goodenhauer, it is your high and solemn duty to guard and protect the people of Berkeley County from all encroachments upon the rights so reserved. I'm not going to use my constitutional right to instruct my representatives. First, at your next meeting, take whatever actions you need to take to repeal the Board of Health's mask requirement recommendation to the school board.
Excuse me a second.
Yes.
Are you aware that about two, two and a half months ago, this body made a motion and voted to not support any mask or any mandates delivered down?
That was, I was in your August.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah.
It was in your August meeting where you voted 5-0, basically, I'm telling you.
Not support.
Not support. And Commissioner Copenhever was unsure what the limit was. He was seeking legal codes, what the code said. I'm telling you what the Constitution says, what your oath said, you are responsible for. Okay?
We haven't changed that motion.
But.
That motion's still.
But the Board of Health and the health officer still has on the table the recommendation that included a requirement to wear masks in K through 12 schools.
Recommendation.
But it was a requirement.
No.
Recommendation to require. The word require is still in there.
Could I ask the counsel that this is a non-agenda item, and you're in violation of West Virginia Code if you enter into dialogue with this gentleman?
Well, he just said we don't have to follow West Virginia Code.
If it infringes on the people's rights.
Everything infringes on rights. What if the next person comes up and states the exactly opposite? Now what do we do?
And that's where you, that's where all of you need to have a discussion, like you did in your August meeting, and determine what you consider as encroachment. But I'm telling you, you have a responsibility, you have the authority to repeal the Board of Health's recommendation for the requirement.
Are you about finished?
First, at your next, I'm almost.
We usually have three minutes.
Okay. I'm almost done. At your next meeting, take whatever action you need to repeal the Board of Health's mask requirement recommendation to the school board. Even though it's a recommendation, it still includes, that's like the meaning of is, is. What's the meaning of is? It's still a requirement.
Have you gone to the school board?
The school board, huh?
Have you gone to the school board?
And they've written me, and they've, they're, they've, they've, they're violating their constitutional responsibility.
Okay, wrap it up, sir.
I am. I want you to repeal the Board of Health's mask requirement recommendation to the school board. It's because it was also under a plea of necessity. If you listen to the health officers' board, a meeting where he talked at the school board meeting on October 7th, it was all a plea of necessity. It's a violation of Article 1, Section 3, and it also prevents all men to be free and independent, Article 3, Section 1. Secondly, develop a procedure to institutionalize the last sentence of Article 1, Section 2 throughout the county to guard and protect the people's rights. Third, identify any ongoing actions by any county department, require the people to have their rights encroached upon, and take necessary corrective actions. If any of you have any questions, you all have my email. Thank you, and have a good day.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else from the public? All right, need a motion to approve the consent agenda, I'm sorry.
Mr. President, I move to approve the agenda if there's modifications or changes proposed date, April the 28th.
Have a motion on the floor in a second. Second, any discussion? If not, all favor say aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Perk sort, any questions on perk sort? Mr. Davis, internal budget revision?
Yes, sir. One brief internal budget revision for your consideration. Request is being made by Chief Port Marshal Mike Lang, Department 416. Mr. Lang's requesting that he be allowed to decrease line 230 contracted services by $250. Unencumbered fund balance is $700. Give or present spent to date an increase line 223 professional services by $250. That currently has a deficit balance of $125. That's what we pay pre-employment fees for this album.
Anybody have any questions on the internal budget revision? Moving on, change of status. Change of status received from Mike Lang, Chief Port Marshal, for Billy Dildine. He is receiving a five-year step increase. His salary will go from $35,372 to $37,494 effective May 1st, 2022. Letter of retirement received from IT Department for Brad Race effective August 31st, 2022. Letter of resignation received from the Day Report Center for Dylan Hess effective April 22nd, 2022. Letter of resignation received from the Assessors' Office for Tiffany Sanders effective April 21st, 2022. Any questions on the change of status? I'm sorry, what?
April 25th.
I'm sorry. Approval minutes, everyone was present for April 14th, 2022. Anyone want, any changes or corrections to those? County council calendars, today we'll be going to tour of Clorox for 1:00 PM. We'll be here next Thursday, Board and Commission. We have library tonight at 5:00 PM, and Blastory at 5:00 PM. Next Monday, on the 2nd, 6:00 PM, Planning Commission. Tuesday, 5:00 PM, Sewer District. 6:00 PM, Storm Water District. Wednesday, the 4th, at 4:00 PM, Telamon. Any changes or corrections to the boards and commissions? We have a canceled check request from the County Clerk's Finance Office. Any questions or concerns on that? Entertained a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion been made, second. Any discussion? If not, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Mr. Hess, you have a little bit of action for us. We have two minutes before bed opening. And you usually take two minutes, so we're good.
I'll do it in a minute. Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
I have one taxpayer error we had to bring to you from last week for BW credit leasing. They claimed that vehicle was in the genuine July 1 of 2020, and that they reported it on their business returns. We have to, this is a taxpayer error. Now, $185 converted.
Mr. President, I move to accept the taxpayer error approval of property assessment for $185, 30.
We have a motion on the floor in a second. Any discussion? If not, all favor say aye. Anyone opposed?
Thank you.
Sorry, Dan.
The only other thing we have, we have six.
Guess I got out booted.
Yeah. We have six office error. We've not raised that, let me show you. Offer was for reasons that missed there, most of them were double billed by our school board. Total amount, they come up to $561.18.
All right. Entertained a motion on the sixth personal property tax exaggeration due to off there.
It's a move.
Have a motion on the floor in a second. Any discussion? If not, all favor say aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries.
Less than a minute.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Davis, you have a bid up me for RFP on the 126 West King Street asbestos removal and building demolition.
Yes, sir. Several months ago, this council directed me to develop an RFP for the demolition of 126 West King Street. Before we had that done, we did have Winchester Environmental come in and do an environmental assessment of the building. And as you know from the report that was received, there were some areas of asbestos identified in 126. So this bid is for the labor materials needed to remove and dispose of the asbestos containing material identified by Winchester Environmental, and then demolish 126 West King Street. The original RFP was issued on March 28th, 2022. Again, it was the request for work on 126 West King Street. We also added an option to provide us the cost for removal of the drive-through roof and the teller machine pedestal for 110 West King Street. We have issued two addendums. Addendum number one was issued on April 12th, 2022, which clarified the boundary lines for the property. And again, just reinforce the fact that the roof and the teller pedestal only was to be renewed, removed, not the bump out on the building itself. Addendum number two was issued on April 13th, 2022, addressing permit requirements for the demolition, as well as the requirement to pay VNO taxes. The RFP was direct mailed to six contractors. It was placed on the website and social media platforms of the county. We advertised in the Marchburg Journal on Thursday, March 31st, 2022. There is certification, publication filed in your packet. The mandatory pre-bid conference was held at 10 o'clock AM on Monday, April 11th, 2022. We had five contractors in attendance after the administrative portion of the pre-bid, which was held in this room. Mr. Lang did take all of the contractors up to 126, where they inspected the site and they walked through the building. Bids were due no later than 4 o'clock PM on Wednesday, April 27th, which was yesterday. We received four bids prior to the deadline, and all four of the contractors did attend the mandatory pre-bid conference.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Thank you, Mr. Davis. All right. Pitch Nogal LLC out of Martinsburg, West Virginia. Lump sum total, a hundred and sixty thousand, one forty-six. And also to remove the, um, I guess it would be the drive-through would be five thousand dollars. So, one hundred and sixty thousand, one forty-six. And to remove the drive-through would be five thousand dollars. Next bid is United Records and Escalators out of Martinsburg, West Virginia. Lump sum bid of a hundred and fifty-seven thousand, three forty-five, one fifty-seven, three forty-five. And to remove the drive-through, um, is four grand. Four thousand. The next one is Adams Demolition. And they're out of Hagerstown, Maryland. Lump sum bid of ninety thousand. And the, to remove the, uh, drive-through would be five thousand dollars. So lump sum, ninety thousand, remove the drive-through, five thousand. Bid number four. Reclaim Company out of Fairmont, West Virginia. Lump sum total, ninety thousand, eight eighty. Ninety thousand dollars, eight eighty. And to remove the drive-through is two cents. Two cents.
That's a good deal, though.
Yeah, well. All right. That concludes the bed open.
Is, is part of that, was part of that RFP to have the licensing provided or is it, is that a, something that, uh, you asked for afterward? That they have all the proper license?
They have to have all that as part of the documentation, so they'll get all of that.
All right. So that would be passed on to the committee for review and to come back with the recommendation. All right. All right. Board and meeting reports, Mr. Barnhart.
Hi, Mr. Barnhart. I was born me, I, and if I attended, was the, uh, uh, Bergen County Public Service Water District. Uh, they, uh, did a pay application for engineering services at the Bunker Hill Plant, a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. They reviewed the third quarter financials and the revenues were slightly above and expenses were around about seventy percent, which is right on. They, uh, reviewed and considered task order number twelve, water mains from the river plant to Berkeley Station for a million dollars. Table on that right now. And reviewed and considered, uh, exploratory test wheel drilling and groundwater exploitation for seven hundred thousand dollars. And that was pretty much it.
What project did they table, Mr. Barnhart?
Uh, the water main, uh, from the river plant to Berkeley Station, tied in with other projects. It's a ten to fifteen million dollar water main.
Is that the?
Twenty-six thousand feet.
Is that the one that's going to tie into, um?
Berkeley Station.
Going to end up at Tabor Station now?
Yeah, probably. Sixty, I think sixteen inches.
Yeah, that's the main. Okay. All right. Anything else? All right. Mr. Delie.
Uh, had a, uh, had a, uh, C V B meeting yesterday that, um, there was a couple of applications at the C V B meeting for, uh, trying to think of the correct term they use. Basically, um, basically applications for, um, for building projects, um, as opposed to, uh, in building improvement projects, as opposed to, there's, the way they're set up right now is for, um, is for grants for like startup projects, startup to, to, uh, to have an event or those type of things or, or to start up a marketing campaign, those type of things. And they're, they don't have a, um, a plan right now, uh, in place to do these, uh, these projects where you're actually going to do work on a, on a building, that type of thing. So it was a good conversation about what percentage they should, um, allocate and that they're, the, they're going to have a meeting, uh, here in the near future that's just going to address that issue of how they can start that program up to be able to, um, accept that case before. And how much out of their budget they're going to put into that pool of money to be able to do that.
Okay.
Let's see, I had a senior services meeting, um, that the, um, there's some concern at the senior services about, um, about employees leaving for, um, for, uh, other jobs that pay more money. And, uh, um, a couple of, a couple of the employees have left and their, their pay is like miserably low. Uh, and it's dictated by the funds that the state allows for reimbursement. And so the thought process is to try to find some, um, some additional sources of income, whether it's a, an annual fundraiser or, um, somebody to give them additional money. Um, I, I thought at one point, I thought they generated money off of the, um, off of the meals that they do. But that's also come back from the state. That's a reimbursement from the state on those funds. And that's only so much money for that. So there's, there, there's really not a lot of revenue sources that they have that's not dictated by the state on how much the allocation. So until they change something at state, um, for, uh, regional pay or, um, which we have everywhere, we have a problem throughout the county, I don't see them getting much relief unless, you know, and the thought process to, to create, you know, we talked about a bourbon event. There's been a couple of bourbon events that have happened here recently that generated, you know, an extra ten thousand dollars or something like that, you know? Um, these food truck events, but if anybody's got an idea that would work for the senior services to create event, that could be an annual event to raise some money that they could rely on, um, which is still kind of risky to, um, pay employees. You know, they're, they're in desperate need of coming up with, uh, additional revenues.
All right. Mr. Whitaker.
I attended a ceremony yesterday to honor a new program, educational program at Shepherd University. And along with Mr. Delie at the airport, the Hunter Carlos Willis, um, aviation program. And it's in conjunction with, um, Bravo Flight, who's going to be the, the schooling, uh, entity out there that's going to take it over. Um, it seems to be the, uh, up and coming jobs of, of the, uh, the future right now. The airline industry, the, uh, maintenance industry for the airlines are looking for about a fifteen percent increase in need. And that's about double what the, um.
Eighteen percent.
Eighteen, that's right, eighteen. And that's about a little over double of what, uh, the national trend is for labor slash, um, general, um, employment. So it's, there is a definite need, um, and I'm hoping that it, it will blossom better. I do know that there's, uh, in other states, they offer, um, early on, uh, education in high school to get you through certain programs like up to, um, if you commit to continue on, um, that they would be your, um, uh, your responsibility to, to take it further in the aviation field. But they will offer you up until you solo in other states and give you the ground school as you are in, in high school. And then, like I said, it's your commitment to, to go on further than that. But it was a, it was very heartfelt, um, um, car, or Hunter Willis was, uh, was a young gentleman who first got introduction to flight, uh, another friend. And, um, but he battled bone cancer for seven years and succumbed to it in January this year. And, um, he's fif- fifteen years old. But anyway, it was a passion that he, um, he learned quite quickly that, uh, it's, he told his dad. He says, Dad, I think this is what I want to do to live in. And, uh, and that was.
It was very, it was very touching to listen to Tom Willis, his father, having conversations about, you know, that, that young man's courage and, and drive to, um, you know, to do some of the things that he did and, and, you know, never complained, never, you know, worry about his, his, uh, um, illness that he was battling, you know, and just, uh.
I don't, I don't know if you remember, a couple of times last year, I wasn't able to make a, a meeting. And I went with Tom and his son and a couple of other people. He also had a great interest in steam engines. And he was, we were able to take him on a couple, um, ventures to, to Lancaster and to, uh, East Round Top. And it was, uh.
Was he named commander of the day, uh?
He was. He was named base commander of the day at the air guard. Uh, he actually was able to, um, his father went from a major to a lieutenant colonel when he was able to present the, the lieutenant colonel on his father. And it was, I was invited to see that also. Very, very moving and to be with that family.
His father said he kept, he took that, and they actually had a uniform made for him. So he took that uniform and he hung it up at his, at his, in his bedroom. And he said, he thought he did, his son did that just to intimidate him because he actually outranked. I thought that was, I thought that was good.
Pretty good. But, uh, it was, uh, I was glad to be invited and, and, um, it was, it was nice to go to.
I, I had a conversation with Jim Klein and I said, you know, I, I would, I would think that, that with the need that they would look into air traffic control and how to go into that. And he said, you know, that thought had never crossed their mind.
Air traffic control's a different animal. That's through the federal government. You gotta go away for scoring for that. And I tell you what.
But there's pre-classes to get you started for it, yeah.
There, uh, actually a friend of mine, many years ago, he's since then retired. Uh, he started as a radio disc jockey and then applied and off he went to air traffic control school. That was right when Reagan fired all the air traffic controllers for not showing up to work. And he got hired immediately. Had a career of it.
All right. Mr. Go-Kanier.
Yes, sir. I had a landmarks meeting, uh, still working on trying to get the M O U with the Morgan Cabin, uh, Morgan Cabin Association. Uh, worked out, gets, got a few minor details. We're, we're about there. Uh, there was discussion, uh, one of our commission members about the LiDAR computer software program, which will, um, enable us to be able to look basically almost through the property and be able to see hopefully where like grave sites were, uh, any indentations in the land that, that, you know, in particular that are man-made, uh, to see what's been disturbed on properties or not. I know that the Farm Land Protection Board uses this software, uh, in their work. Uh, and I spoke to the I T director this morning about it. So we just gotta get some of those, uh, details worked out. Uh, it takes, um, a high-powered computer really to be able to handle that type of software. But it's, it's pretty neat. And I, I looked at a, uh, a YouTube, uh, video of LiDAR and how it, how it works. I'm not that guy to be able to do that, but it did seem very interesting because it, there has been concerns in, in planning in particular about grave sites that have been disturbed through development. So hopefully we'll be able to locate these, these sites and get them protected, you know, so that they can move on without, uh, destruction. Um, also, uh, I T has completed the upgrades at four twenty South Raleigh, the old jail. So hopefully, uh, to be at our next meeting, uh, we'll be able to start using that lobby area there and one office for those meetings. So.
Which reminds me, um, Penny, can you get ahold of Jack or Tracy, one of you? And make sure we have the combination to the safe, uh, safes over there, if there's any over there. All right. I don't have anything to report on at this time. Um, any, uh, board and commission vacancy activity?
Yes, sir. Um, I'd like to reappoint Teresa McCain to Board of Health for another five years term.
Now you have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
All right.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. All right. Uh, next on our agenda, Sheriff Nathan Harmon, request for compensation increases.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning.
As always, I appreciate, uh, seeing you all again. Um, I'm a little stoppy. My body hasn't made its mind up whether it's still winter or spring.
I don't think any of us have.
Apologize for that. Um, yeah, I'm glad I have the opportunity to, to come in front of you and, and explain in more detail my March, um, thirtieth request. Yet through, throughout my, uh, tenure here at the sheriff's office, Tom and I have implemented a lot of changes. So as our department can see more productive and efficient and honestly, truth be told, as many as, uh, of our staff can attest. And it's not, it's, there have been a lot of comments and the positive in the community. We're not the easiest folks to work with in the department as far as, uh, you know, our expectations for proactive performance and positive results. But, um, the most appreciated and prideful moments come from when our citizens and you have, uh, approached us commenting on how well our department is doing. And been doing. For example, keeping doors open, uh, till midnight. The citizens appreciate that. And, um, a visible increase in morale and work product, productivity, productive efforts to address our drug problem and simply saying thank you and for the first time in a long time. Um, the most recent hiring of Deputy Cooper and Deputy Webb will actually bring our, our department to full staff. Though often Tom and I get a lot of credit, we simply could not have gotten where we are today, uh, without the strong relationships, trust and confidence that we have built and established within our community, our staff. And just as important with those relationships, trust and confidence with you. With the internal restructuring done earlier last year and the hiring and departure of various positions, I felt it imperative to be able to have a mechanism to quantify an employee's performance, their productivity and investment that has, by its own evidence previously stated, helped Tom and I get to the department where it is today. This mechanism has come through the creation and implementation of performance-based evaluation. The highest one can make through this point system is forty-five. And multiple staff members have achieved high marks, subsequently being in the mid-thirties range. There's one thing to give a good pat on the back and say job well done. But as a supervisor, they possess the ability to show that appreciation through a pay increase, that appreciation gratitude of job well done becomes more of a deep-rooted, not only appreciated through the individual recipient, but echoes amongst the staff subsequently incentivizing a better work environment across the board. It is for these reasons that on March thirtieth, through consultations and conversations with Ms. Kelly and Mr. Davis and various budget reviews and analysis that I wanted to utilize a vacant position, which had unexpectedly became vacant earlier in the year, May of two thousand and twenty-one, with Mrs. Scales. With her departure, I had to look at our current staff administratively and ponder. the question of whether I needed to replace her. One would think, yeah, I needed to immediately replace her, um, because of the things that she was responsible for. Payroll and invoices and purchasing, uh, things of that nature. I'll go through a list here in a second. But I took a step back and, and looked at what we had and remembered what the council has advised in the, historically, that if I can do something more efficiently without requesting additional positions, then try my best to do that. And as I took a good part of, from May till March thirtieth to evaluate, um, my staff's performance with that unexpected departure, it was kind of like a sink or swim situation, especially for two individuals seated in the back of this room, Ms. Kelly and Ms. Sullivan. As they took on the duties that she vacated, Ms. Scales vacated. They not only took on those duties, they took on additional duties. And it has excelled extremely well in those duties. Without complaint, without argument, the relationship and atmosphere within that office, within the hallway, the executive hallway, has become more positive than ever before. Ms. Kelly, um, her responsibilities and duties encompass grant research, grant requirements as far as our department, working with Tracy Gillings and April Holm and Grant County's grant office to make sure we're abiding on the front end with these grants. Any of the restrictions that come with these grants that we're, we are walking the line when it comes to reporting and documenting our usage of these grants. And then of course, grant networking, anybody that I get grants, uh, solicitation all the time. I forward those to Ms. Kelly and, and the grant writers from the county and it's, it's a constant communication network. Ms. Kelly also does writs of execution, bond letters, auction advertisements, post writs for service, tracking spreadsheets for writs, process payments. Uh, no partial payments, but balances must be paid in full or hold writ temporarily, flexibility for payment in full. Budget and analysis, this is crucial to me, just as well as the council relies on Mr. Davis and his numbers, uh, and puts the confidence in him, which is an amazing job. I put the same confidence and trust in Ms. Kelly. We have had multiple conversations, some on the spot, impromptu and unexpected. Um, and without fail, this young lady has always provided me with an approximate number while competing with the, uh, growing pains of the introduction of new financials. She provides me control reports, this budget analysis, an annual review, quarterly review, year-end encumbrances, cost-saving analysis. She also helps consolidate accounts. Accident and incident report request fees, fingerprint fees, civil process fees, then verification fees. Some of the additional duties that she took on was forfeiture account. And as you all were, uh, briefed by me previously in the year, our, our, our annual review of our, uh, department, uh, our forfeiture has went up over three hundred percent. With the budget, an additional, um, duty in consultation, preparation, submission for all sheriff department budgets. Again, I'm not an easy person to work for. She could have very well, uh, reviewed these numbers with me a week prior, but, uh, as I want to keep up to date and grow with the new software, I want to always keep current with control reports and like that. And she, uh, has adamantly abided by every request that I've, I've asked of her. This includes monitoring monthly deposits, state budget revisions, correspond and provide information when asked by finance department for grant overtime reimbursements. She took on the payroll completely. And I can honestly say through my, uh, career, if you want to mute me real quick, screw up someone's payroll or their paycheck that feeds their family and, uh, you'll get a, you'll get a fight immediately. Um, but she does that. And, uh, truth be told, you know, we're all human and our deputies make mistakes from time to time, forget to add this, forget to note that in regards to overtime or, or the time sheets. And she, uh, very quickly and adamantly tracks them down and makes sure that these numbers are correct and they submit in a timely manner. So the payroll change notifications, increases, terminations, military leave, leave without pay, et cetera, FMLA and workers compensation paperwork, working closely with Tracy and Penny in terms of getting that paperwork through. As well as the P card, monthly statement reconciliations, track down receipts if needed, sign account information for each charge, enter figures to Excel for department tracking. And she also technically is the mother hen of the patrol room. Uh, I'm sure that because of her office being located, uh, within the, uh, farm's reach of all the deputies, that she's definitely, uh, inquired upon quite a bit by the deputies and she keeps the, uh, paperwork and the officers, um, um, appeased by it being able to answer financial questions for them, um, maintain, uh, the patrol room in terms of supplies and, uh, and, uh, maintain supplies for the mental hygiene commission. And she also assists Ms. Sullivan with invoice fitting, processing, tracking and monitoring. When I hired Ms. Sullivan, Ms. Sullivan was, um, hired on as a public relations coordinator and administrative assistant. Primary duties consumed, uh, considered as the community events coordination, social media, monitoring, upgrades, posts, website design, upkeep, production, department recruitment videos, training room calendar. And then secondary was, um, that was shared with Ms. Scales, was invoices, budget review and reconciliation, new hire uniform, um, equipment issue, new hire in processing packets, free academy deployment paperwork and arrangements, hotels and stuff like that, lodging, transportation, shipping and receiving, office supply and inventory, sheriff scheduling, calendar. Right now, because of Ms. Scales' departure, she's, um, still keeping up with social media and her PR responsibilities. She's established a Twitter account. She's effectively gotten currently our followers up to fourteen thousand on our, our sheriff's department. Manage all aspects of social media communications, messages, tags, comments, you know, just as well as I do, that there's, Facebook is a very unfiltered realm and, and if there's anything in the negative, she makes sure that it's brought to my attention immediately with an addresser, so it doesn't become some frenzy. She manages all aspects, she, she manages not only the social media, but the Twitter account, which is new. Um, she created or assisted and created a large portion of Berkeley County Sheriff's Department website, which is currently in IT's hands. She has completed that. We're waiting for the final touches from IT to be able to launch that, which is willing to encompass a large amount of transparency for the department as well as the community. The citizens literally will have a one-stop shop to be able to find out more information than they ever have. She's built up a network within the community. I find her on the phone all the time, especially with the upcoming community event on May twenty-first. Um, and she maintains this information network that is far more vast than I could have ever imagined her doing. She helps create transparency and positivity within the department. She literally is my right hand and on a lot of occasions, my left. She's increased the physical presence and participation within the community. All the relationships that I've wanted to establish with these other organizations within the county, she has done that. She's assisted me. She disseminates press releases to media contacts. She manages my schedule as well as Chief Young's schedule. And I can tell you, that job in and by itself is an ever-living, breathing, uh, and ever-changing, um, job because we are busy. We, Tom and I, when we said we hit the ground running, we're still running and sometimes sprinting, so she, she keeps up. She returns phone calls and voicemails on our behalf. She meets with the citizens requesting to meet with me. She keeps personnel files, past and current employees, distributes executive level mail items with proper attention to myself. Strong work, she establishes strong work and relationships with other county organizations and vendors. She does keep in contact with Mr. Anderson. Files and receives FFL applications and firearms transfers, verifies order requests and, uh, and makes sure that they've met guidelines. She processes all the requests and that I need to approve and has them in front of me very efficiently. She tracks all orders placed, projected ship dates and back ordered items. She is very good at projection. When I first took office, um, if I found that the in processing of anyone new was in disrepute, it took literally the first two months for me to even get a full uniform. Now we are in a position and then even with the new deputies, uh, whereas things were on backorder, we were waiting on this, that or the other. Um, and deputies would have to stay in civilian attire, uh, for lengths of time. And I felt not only that to be an embarrassment, but a very huge gap in efficiency. Now I can honestly tell you that there are two totes in my office with Mr. Cooper, Mr. Webb's equipment. And, uh, I don't remember their hire on date, but it, it's soon to come, the May fifteenth. Um, and that is an example of how efficient she has made it. She works closely with the quartermaster, Lieutenant Rupan, for items to be inventoried and distributed. She certifies the invoices that, that they're correct. Items have been received, labeled in correct account, in a, a correct account for payment that's endorsed by me and sent to Tracy. Keeps a current list of paid invoice invoices for the department and patrol reserves, dog kennel, forfeiture and gun fund to give true up-to-date numbers and compare regularly against control reports. I've already went over the new hire processing, but in that process, you know, part of those processes that, uh, she makes herself available for all open entry test dates, meaning she helps proctor those tests, every single one of them. She follows applicants through each step and schedules physicals, polygraphs, psychological evaluations, uniform fittings, and again, academy entry processes, lodging, transportation, orders all the needed items for their, for the new hire positions, as I previously stated. And she works closely with Melissa Beavers to ensure, um, to prepare all new hire contracts, paperwork for the council, financial, finance and civil service. She manages the inventory of the uniforms. Something comes in incorrectly, it's the wrong size, she immediately gets on the phone with the vendor. I can assure you, she has already saved us thousands of dollars in credit when we order from folks like Galls, uh, when we do bulk orders and whatnot. And she, she has effectively saved us thousands of dollars because they messed up the order. She's a notary of public. She writes memos on my behalf, um, letters of support from the community. She also took it upon herself, along with Jason Scales, and traveled, uh, around and across the county and distributed thank you letters that I wrote for every business and community organization that contributed to our law publications effort that provided literature on sexual abuse, child abuse, uh, drug abuse and so forth. She tracks all the trainings taken, uh, by our employees. She keeps a community event book that's, uh, thicker than any book that I have at the office currently from last year. And I think this year, the binder is either just as thick, if not thicker. She books travel arrangements for all the deputies, making sure that they have the appropriate lodging and that it's co-located with the training and that it has the amenities needed by the deputies. To include myself when I take trips to Charleston, uh, Benton Austin, uh, composition that I attended not too long ago, as well as the land sale event that our tax office and myself are getting ready to go to in Clarksville. And, um, she does all that. She conducts tours, set up and tear down of the building for groups and events, and we've done several. Makes arrangements for any event held hosted by the Berkeley County Sheriff's Department banquet, DEA drug takeback day, and this Saturday, we're actually having our second one. It was so successful last year, they wanted to, the organizations wanted to host camp Aaron R. Parklot yet again. And we're having that this Saturday. Data and statistics and tracking for various, um, promotions, emergency contact information, tri-county swearing for the officers as we're, uh, dual sworn in Morgan County and Jefferson County, she helped arrange that and made sure and track that, that we all are accounted for. Creation of the recruitment collateral and network. This is recruitment shows at the, uh, like the one sixty-seventh or any recruitment events, she spearheads that, sets up a table, nice advertisement, make sure we have the literature and appropriate app, information there. And any other, the needs of the sheriff, the, myself, uh, and Tom. And, uh, that's, that's probably understating the things that we ask her to do in terms of Tom and I, but, you know, when I looked at, uh, what these two were doing, and I'm specifically talking about these two, because I know that they're the largest increase in the year. And as I went through and, and I'm going to just use approximations, I went through their additional duties and hats that they wore, uh, from the time, from what I originally hired them for and how I rely on them, uh, I found that, that, and Gary Wine, I remember what Mr. Wine said when, uh, we originally wanted to hi- hire a PR specialist, he may comment, you'll never find one at twenty-eight thousand and change. He was correct. With everything that she does and puts into this, and as much as I rely again on Ms. Kelly as you do with Mr. Davis, I found their efforts to be very, very valuable. So I look at a list and position title and compensation range, minimums and maximums and, uh, you know, when, when we look at whether it's finance director or, um, public information coordinator, um, you know, public information coordinator, for example, the minimum is forty-three thousand, four hundred and thirty-three, the maximum is sixty thousand and change. I look, I tried to assess this information and to pile what would be a, an equivalent to that. And that's the number that we saw submitted before you on March thirtieth. Again, with, with the performance evaluation, um, mechanism, that tool is invaluable to me, much as I will never come in front of you and just simply ask for a pay increase. Your consideration and approval of a ten percent increase in, in the part-time hourly increase. was crucial, it's huge for maintaining folks and softening the blow, so to speak, post-COVID. When, before you'd go out and buy $3, $2, $4, and now it's $12. I mean, that, that was, that was very meaningful and deeply appreciated. And when I look at the, when I look at everything that's going on within our office, I wanted to be able to incentivize folks to do a good job within our department. And that's why I'm coming before you to explain why I've asked for these increases. They could be categorized as extraordinary, but you're talking about folks that are doing extraordinary things, things I never asked them to do, things they were trusted into to do because of our restructuring and because of unexpected events. Before, you awarded me some part-time, a full-time position that went into two part-time positions, and I took a part-time position and tried to do some pay increase. Learned my lesson with that one. That is not the case here today. I'm not asking you to create a position and subsequently dissolving that position and giving pay increases. This actual position already existed and unexpectedly was vacant. I'm asking the council to allow me the consideration to be able to utilize some of the money, not all. I believe we're giving over $8,300 back, if not some more. But I'm asking the council to allow me the ability to take a vacant position and allot that position internally in my department. I would love to do the same thing with the tax office. Unfortunately, the tax office was not the same, same opportunity that existed there. And if I could briefly just mention tax office, because we just recently went through an audit. I know, am I?
Just please be, be quick about it.
Yeah, sure, sure, sure. But, you know, they've always kept within a 95% tax intake and accountability. And, and, you know, we didn't get that, and I understand. And I don't hold any animosity with that. That was money I was asking for that was not there. But without fail, the tax office does a tremendous job. And we do still have people struggling there. So with, with that said, I'm asking the council for their consideration to allow me the ability of money that previously existed there and utilize it at IC fit to incentivize and keep that healthy work environment within the department. So it can thrive and continue to thrive. And this is not something that I plan on coming to you next year and saying the same thing. We have some really good projections for next year, where hopefully, I'm not asking you for anything. But that's another discussion. But I'm asking the council to consider allowing me the ability to use existing funds from a vacant position.
All right. Sheriff, I guess the, the first thing I'll say is the same thing, very similar to what you said, echo a little bit. I think this council and the community is very happy and very proud of what you and the chief has done with the sheriff's department, without a doubt. We express that all the time. What I thought would take four years to do, you all did in less than a year. So there's no question in doubt of the, of the quality of work that you, your office has been putting out. I will, and, and my opinion, with your budget, you do what you want, all right? But I would fair warn you that you, the, the one thing that this council tries to do is keep fair equity amongst the whole county government, which is 440 some employees and not just seven. Or your tax office, and I know you was in front of us for this, the animal control too, not too long ago. So, and that's what we do. I can tell you that, and I'm sure you read everything that Mr. Davis has printed out here. And, and some of your employees that, that you're talking about has been compensated tremendously well in the last nine months, above and beyond anybody that, you know, anybody else in the county. And you spoke to it briefly about a position that was created that, that you're, you're not taking advantage of that because that doesn't go over well with us at all.
I understand.
And so I, I can see where there could be some issues in the near future, and I hope not. But I just wanted to let you know, just gave you warning about. Because it's, that's how I've been here for almost 12 years now, and I'm, you know, I know how it works. And, but in my opinion, there's nobody else that knows how your office runs more than you do, all right?
I appreciate that.
Open it up to the rest of the council.
Well, you know, I'll be honest, as I listen to the list of duties that, that you spoke of, I'm, in my mind, I'm thinking that with a list of duties, you can easily be asking for another employee with that much on somebody. So I, I don't know, personally, I don't know how somebody's gonna be able to do all that and sustain all that for a period of time without you coming back and wanting another employee. And, and we're talking about doing away with the employee to pay more wages so that you don't have to have another employee. But that argument that you gave to give more pay to the person, which I think that if they're doing those duties right now, at bare minimum, they should be compensated at least short term until you have another employee. But, but I, I also agree with what Ben said. It's your responsibility to do. I just hope that the, the end results of it doesn't upset the scale that we've tried and worked very hard to create as well as cause internal problems for you.
Sheriff, I have a few questions. All these employees that, the seven in particular, as you're speaking about, did they receive the 10% pay increase that was effective last July?
Uh, was it?
Yes, sir. They did.
Okay. The, the workforce performance evaluation. Was, is those evaluations done by all of your civilian staff?
Yes, sir.
That was, did that also include the tax office?
Yes, sir.
It did?
It did.
Would you consider this to be a realignment of personnel? And we've, we've, we've been able to, from time to time, take different positions and reconsolidate and reclassify these positions and finance, or not finance, but pay them accordingly because they did receive additional responsibilities, knowing full well that that job would not be filled in the future. Just keep in mind that if you go to use Mrs. Scales' salary to be able to fund these positions, that that's, could perhaps not be reoccurring. Because that, that position won't be, won't be filled. So, you know, come budget time, you know, you're gonna have to do your, do your work there, do your hard work there, okay? I'm just, just saying that. And, and I, I don't disagree with Mr. Cooper, but the, the money is in your budget, you know, to be able to do those things. And there's an actual $8,300 left, I think, for what I understood. If you've, you've got, I, I don't want you to create a morale issue within your agencies, and that's not my responsibility, that's yours. But just, I would say, be cautious there on how you handle that. But that's all I have.
No, I appreciate that, sir.
You know, I understand you hire somebody at, at a certain level of income, and you want to, you expect a certain position to be filled for this particular job. And then as time goes on, they take on more and more and more and more and more. I get it. I understand that. So if, if this is a realignment or reclassification and we're eliminating a position, I can, I can probably swallow that, so.
I think you're, you're right on, on point, Councilman. It's, it's definitely a reconsolidation. It's very similar to what, I mean, Gary Wine does a phenomenal job at everything that he does. And I, if I'm, if I'm not misspeaking here, I think he was put, you know, overseeing the finance department to some degree and whatnot, and having that, you know, you know, additional duties and whatnot. I mean, we've just simply done the same thing. And I, hands down, to what Mr. Lilier had said, that these ladies have done a phenomenal job without complaint and have done it efficiently. Well, like I said, it was a sink or swim situation, and I watched them. And I continuously went to them and asked them, are you okay? Do we need to hire a part-time person in lieu of what Miss Scales had did? No, I'm good. And they have continued to do so and remarkably well. Yeah, for over, over a year. So, and, and got punched right in the mouth with it. Like I said, it was an unexpected vacancy, and it was well received, actually.
Mr. Davis, you have anything to say?
I just wanna go on record that I think the sheriff's proposal is excessive. And, and I can't support it, but it's not my decision to make against this council. If the council does approve it, I want the record to show that Department 701 will be going from 10 full-time and one part-time position to nine full-time and one part-time position. Because things like this are, will be forgotten in a matter of time. And I want something to go back to that document, what's occurring today.
And is the sheriff correct that this would be in his budget and $8,900, yeah, $8,900 is?
And, and it will be adjusted because you're eliminating benefits. You're taking the total amount of salaries and reallocating the salary. But the benefits, the PERS, the FICA, and the health insurance that remain, will take that money out of the budget next year because you're eliminating that position. So there will be a budget reduction next year.
Any consideration of feel like this position?
Not at all. Not at all.
Not in the future?
No.
All right, this, with all the correspondence back and forth, this is still what you wanted to do?
Yes, sir.
entertain a motion.
Yes, sir. I'll make the motion that we accept to step the sheriff's recommendation for reclassification of employees and realignment of those salaries.
And the elimination of one.
The elimination of the one full-time position, which will reduce him to nine admin staff instead of 10.
And one part-timer.
Yeah, one part-timer.
Motion been made and seconded. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Anyone oppose? The motion carries.
Thank you very much.
All right, let's take a break. Quick break.
There he is.
All right, we're back in session. Next on our agenda is Rachel Snively.
Ready to bang that gavel, Will.
We're back, yeah, we're back in session. Rachel Snively, Executive Director of Region Nine, Neil Doran.
Tracy Graves.
I'm sorry, I did. Tracy, I'm sorry. I already had you checked off. Tracy Gilms, Grant Administrator, MOU, Berkeley County Health Department, SMSHA Grant. Sorry about that, Tracy.
This is a memorandum of understanding for the SAMSA grant. It is with the Berkeley Morgan County Health Department. The goals of this MOU is to coordinate the service of referral process for clients, participants and patients of Berkeley County Day Report Center and Berkeley Morgan County Health Department, ensuring of the non-duplication of services, providing the participants, clients and patients with access to medical services not currently provided by the referring agency, which would be the Day Report Center, and three, to develop a collaborative and cross-agency model to discuss and co-manage mutual participants, clients and patients in order to improve the delivery of care for them.
All right. Anybody have any questions for Tracy?
Tracy, do you have a question I have? I see the MOU between the DRC and the Health Department, but right above it is also a MOU between the Day Report Center about your DCA help.
Is that on the agenda for today? That, I have that for, you have me next week.
Okay, so that should not be in this week's package?
No, that's not.
Okay. Just one?
Yeah, this one today is.
Okay, so this one is just, so the one that's signed by Dr. Hartgens will be on your agenda for today.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Tracy? Thank you, Mr. Davis. All right, entertaining motion.
Mr. President, you have the memorandum of understanding between Berkeley County Council or the Day Report Center and the Berkeley Morgan County Health Department.
Second. Motion been made, seconded. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor say aye. Anyone oppose? The motion carries. Thank you, Tracy.
Thank you.
All right, next on agenda is Rachel Snively, Executive Director of Region Nine, Neil Doran, Manager of Eastern West Virginia Regional Airport Authority, request for matching grant funds for air cargo feasibility study. Good morning.
Good morning. Pleasure to be with you. It's okay, I'd like to approach and.
Sure.
To make sure you've got a copy of that, that was a statewide economic and tax study that looked at all airports. That's an update from the previous figure a few years ago where we were at two-hundred-and-twenty-five million dollars annually. So that's a 2019 number. That was, if you add up all of those different factors, you're at about three-hundred-and-fifty-five million. That was two years, well, I should say one year before we bought the Aerosmith assets and we went into business. So you've probably heard about all the growth that's happened since that time. So our number must be bigger and larger than that. Talking about economic impact because we want to continue the good things going on in the airport. Our strategic business plan of 2018 identified air cargo as a growth opportunity for us and now we're positioned where if we had civilian air cargo on the field, we would be fueling those aircraft ourselves with our own people. We would be handling those aircraft with our own people. And so those revenues would come to the airport area as opposed to private business and. So that's very exciting. We are number three in West Virginia right now according to that study. And if we look at a Charleston-Jager Airport or if we look at a North Central West Virginia Airport in Parksburg, we see that their numbers are very big because they have one big user or group of users that create that regular flow or demand of jet aircraft business such as Mitsubishi or Aurora Flight Sciences or Pratt &amp; Whitney at Parksburg or the Delta Airlines, the American, the Spirit Airlines at Jager. The flow of money we want to bring to this community as well. We are working with a company and we're looking for partners so we can do a more in-depth study to look specifically at aviation, to look at what the airport might need to do to improve its infrastructure to better meet the needs of air cargo. And this is in further instance, what we looked at are the airport master plan. We also have to look at market demand and feasibility. What are the existing facilities in the region? Are there major needs? Is there any further opportunities we can exploit to take advantage? So if we're able to receive the grant, we're looking for thirty-two thousand four hundred and eighty-three dollars from the Appalachian Region Commission. Rachel will tell you about the details of that. And then we can supply a local match. We'll be able to engage experienced air cargo consultants, airport engineers and have steering crew to help with these and produce an end product that will answer vital questions. One question you might have is how is this different from previous efforts in the past? There were feasibility studies that were done, you might remember, in 2009, 2012. Well, if you look back at those, they were talking about an inland port concept. Inland ports are basically facilities that are connected by highway to a sea port, an ocean port, and it's a drive port like the one in Front Royal, Virginia. And you have these container lift devices that move the container from rail to truck and vice versa. Well, the things that move by truck and rail don't often move by aircraft. It's just a different type of problem. And it's a niche market, so less than one percent of all freight is air cargo. We're not looking at that. We're not looking at rail. We're not looking at facilities that are redundant to what's already in Front Royal and what's already in Green Castle and Chambersburg will commence specific demand of air cargo and whether we can do that in Marksburg. So that's the request today. If the council might consider supporting in partnership with us thirty-two thousand four hundred and eighty-three dollars. And it would be a six-month process that would answer the vitally important questions and I believe help the airport to move forward, to identify the scope of services we provide, our staff level, do we need to become Part 139 certified for hosting cargo airline operations? Those are all reported questions. And in the scope of work, we will look at general aviation airports in the United States that do not have airline service but have been able to host cargo airlines and what would be instructive in that process and how we might do the very same thing. So we have seventy years of military air cargo here and. thing. So we have 70 years of military air cargo here in Marksburg, but having civilian air cargo is what would bring even more economic benefits. And bringing those economic benefits to the Airport Authority itself in our budget would allow us to better care for our main responsibilities. Have any questions for me, or how Rachel did describe the grant project?
Sure. The Appalachian Regional Commission Power Application Planning Grants. It is due tomorrow. We had to identify under our state orders, so we have some public and private state orders already identified. From the private side, we've already identified Roman, Quad, Procter &amp; Noble, and we're waiting on a couple others that have already indicated that they're interested in exploring air cargo for their facilities, and they would be part of the steering committee for this process as well. So it's not just identifying new end users, but also fostering the state initiatives that are already in Berkeley County to expand their operations as well. Like Neil said, this was identified numerous times throughout the strategic plan, and it's in 2018, as a potential source of sustainable revenue for the airport. So this project, it's the starting point to get that going, to do the market analysis, and to make recommendations for whatever improvements the airport needs to make to support mid-level cargo regarding staffing, labor, helping, et cetera. And in that report will be high-level processes. And we can take forward and seek funding elsewhere to make those improvements, in addition to other grant partners, you know, get resources that they are looking to identify.
Neil, I just want to make sure that, and I have these conversations with other people as well, but one of the goals for this County Council with our partners is to get them to be self-sustainable and a prime example of that is the Developmental Authority. And the Airport Authority is well underway at being self-sustainable. Just so the public knows, y'all went from about $330,000 budget just two years ago, I think, or maybe three, to $3.3 million budget projected to be next year. That's extremely strong growth, and we're proud to be a very strong partner with the Airport Authority. We've supported y'all almost 100%. And why shouldn't we when we see those numbers? As I talked to Nick Deal, you know, before long, it's got to stop, you know, and become, have a roadmap, become self-sustainable. And he provided us that roadmap to, within, I think, three years, to be totally self-sustainable. Growth is a good thing, but at the end of the, somewhere in the near future, it's got to show net profit. Right now, the Airport Authority is continuing to make investments back in not only the Airport Authority, not only County Council, but the state of West Virginia has made some great investments there. One of the things that keeps coming up a little bit is, we're not the only ones. That's part of your Airport Authority. Our memberships is just some of them. You also have Jefferson County, you have the City of Martinburg. Has anybody talked about, to them, about getting some money to help out? Because we've been investing a huge amount of money.
You're correct. And my apologies for not mentioning the extraordinary support that we have received. And really, dollar for dollar, our surpasses financial support we receive from other county governments and local governments. We are always trying to build those relationships and help them to see the airport as the airport in the entirety of the Eastern Hemisphere. We do face a perception, some people feel like it's the county airport, where it's the county's airport that pay airport benefits to a greater degree than state or city does. Even getting a $5,000 contribution from a neighboring county has been a real challenge. Jefferson County did not even support Mr. Allen's appointment this year. At least point a three-year term, they made even $5,000 to the airport. So that's troubling, and we're working on it. I would just say that this grant opportunity came up, and we'll compress timeline. We kind of learned that, learned it rest away. So we are scrambling. She mentioned our government tomorrow. So in retrospect, given a little bit more time, we would have been able to engage more with other government entities.
So the answer is the sole matching funds are coming from the council?
Yes, you're the only government we're requesting those funds from.
Correct. I think that was council. That's an important first question.
Is there any other resources that's being explored?
If funds cannot be prepared through the council, we will look for it through our own budget. But we have to have a commitment letter in the act that says we will pay the cost. So we're going to be committed to doing that. If the council can partner with us, that would be fantastic. If not, we will slow this down.
Rachel, aren't you concerned about giving another project to Michael Baker? They still have deliverables for Parks and Rec, and they have deliverables to the Council for Sports and Paradise. Now we're adding another deliverable to them.
Michael Baker is an international firm.
I understand.
So we have every project that we do with them, aside from Troy being the base of that project. The staff that works on these projects are completely different staff persons. So the staff that would be working on this project is actually, we have a Baltimore office in Franklin, who's to do with Parks and Rec. We have a separate office in Pittsburgh. It is for a cost.
Do you ever put consulting services like this out for bid?
We maybe do an RFQ process for on-call consultant every two, three years.
So will this, will this study allow additional funds for, if, obviously, a feasibility study allows, or shows us what can and can't sustain here, is that going to allow FAA funds if a project were to come forward to be able to access some funds for the FAA, through the FAA to help create something out at the airport?
I wouldn't put it out of the realm of possibility.
But I would think, I would think there would be grants that, that this study would help, help get grants to do projects out there as well.
I don't know FAA grants, but I do know that the ARSC has a tendency that we stick to the planning grants, they'll reform on a given condition.
It would help firm up the market demand in this feasibility. And then a company, an investor that wanted to do that here in Marksburg would be more confident in signing those agreements and putting forth those letters that convince the FAA, this is not just an idea, this isn't going to happen. And then they warm up to give a grant. But they don't like to build things in advance of seeing firm commitment.
Right. So our five-year plan, what are we, four years into the five-year plan out at the airport now?
Yeah, approximately, because I believe our study published in 2018.
Correct. So, so, so the air cargo was a large part of that five-year plan?
Yes.
So, I mean, this is in suit with what we had talked about from the very beginning and have been investing in moving forward, so.
100%.
Will your feasibility study, will it include international cargo?
Well, it's going to look for a need. What is the need? And answer that question. It may be more likely that domestic cargo movements is what the market needs. But we're also considering, if this isn't moving cargo for the military, for the DOD, those flights could be international.
And in your study, will it also identify the needs of the services that would need to be provided, you know, such as fire protection, such as warehousing, you know, I don't know what else might be involved in the transportation hub, but those things would be considered?
Yes, the support services that the airport would need. We didn't have a lot of concerns about the capability of the 167th, it's so impressive. But looking at our fuel farm, are our tanks large enough? Do we need bigger tanks? At what frequency would the fuel need to be purchased? Looking at the weight-bearing capacity of our taxiways. If we had regular traffic by big aircraft that are using not taxiway Alpha on the military side of the airport, but using Bravo and Charlie and Delta, would a big, heavy aircraft break them with regular use? Or do they need to be reinforced, or bigger, heavier aircraft? That's a very important question to answer. What do you need in terms of your ground crews that are there to park the aircraft and to refuel and unload products? Do you need scissor loads? Do you need forklifts? Do you need refrigerated facilities that can take perishables and pharmaceuticals and other things that need by air cargo? Are there synergies with US Mail, FedEx, and other, Amazon, other facilities nearby in the high... There's a lot of questions that really could be answered, but I think also engaging with the air cargo community and experienced consultants that would be retained, that knows the players, might be able to shop Martinburg around to folks that, you know, greater exposure of our airport and our community to those, those people that do this, those large projects that cost, you know, $500, $100 just a little. But these places, they, you know, they employ hundreds of people, so, and they, these aircraft buy millions of gallons of fuel a year. So it would be a game changer for us.
The other thing that was, I think, previously asked about to Mr. Kooten Haver, is that you had mentioned that you are capable of providing some partnership with this. What percentage of this $32,000 could you do?
Well, that's probably not a question I could answer right, right now, without speaking to Nick, our Executive Director, and our trainer, I guess, but given our short timeframe, it might be open to some split partnership. We just need to show in the grant application there, that we need the total cost.
That's all, that's all I've got. Thank you.
Yeah, we have grown in our budget, but we have the kind of growing pains. We're doing very well with our air charter product, but we have no aircraft maintenance, which are big ticket items. We have to employ pilots and mechanics if we're in the wages that we need to earn, because we have to be competitive on the job market. And so, yes, our revenue's grown, but we're spending what we are at this time.
Neil, I guess one of the questions that I would, all the things that you say that you would have to add, personnel and fuel, and fuel and all that stuff, one thing that we can't make more of, and that's land. Do we have the land to do a project like this?
Yes.
Okay, good. All right.
And we have more than one development site.
Right.
It's definitely, it's definitely feasible.
I actually have an ideal site for air cargo down at TNA Runway.
Yeah, we're the only foreign trade zone in West Virginia that has an airport. That could be a real key advantage. That was done years ago for Polo Route.
One of the things that I was thinking about, and this is my thought process, and the council can entertain a motion, but, you know, one way to get you all self-sustainable is start pushing that trigger and pulling that switch. And that would be, my suggestion would be that we match 50/50. You put, you put just much skin in the game as we do. And that would be $16,000. No, we'll give a dollar more, $16,442. So entertain a motion.
My board, I'll make the motion to offer half the needed funds for the matching grant.
$16,442?
$16,442.
Second motion.
I have a motion on the floor and a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much. I'll have your commitment by the end of today. Thank you.
All right, anybody here for public comment? All right, this time I'd like to go into executive session for economic development reasons. I have a motion on the floor.
Second.
Second, second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. We are in executive session.
I was telling him I'm so busy doing this.
We're out for sex sessions, I mean a motion to, uh, I guess, go to Clorox. No, we're not wanting to jurn, I guess we wanna take a recess and reconvene at Clorox.